All right. Good evening. Welcome to this joint meeting of the Merrimack School Board and Merrimack Town Council this Thursday evening, December 10th. Would you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have one quick announcement. Board, uh, School Board member Davis Powell is excused from this evening's meeting. And I wonder if Chairman Harrington would like to introduce the members of Town Council and Town Management?
Certainly. Well, sitting at the table here is our Town Manager, Eileen Cabanal, and the Assistant Town Manager, Director of Finance, Paul McKelly. To my right is Counselor Jody Valencourt, Counselor Deandwyer, Counselor Tom Mahon, Counselor Finley Rothaus, Counselor Tom Koenig, and Counselor Bill Boyd.
Thank you. And for the School Board at the table is Superintendent Marge Chaffrey. In the lovely purple shirt is Business Administrator Matt Chevanel.
Secure man that he is.
Yes, I am.
Yes, you are. It is lovely.
Did you not get the memo, Paul?
It's Mr. Pink versus Mr. Purple.
There we go. Immediately to my left is Vice Chair Barnes. Two seats over is Board Member Andy Schneider. And then down on the right, second from last, is Board Member Cindy Gualume. I thank everyone for being here tonight to talk about the topics of interest to both governing bodies on behalf of the people of Merrimack. So item number two on our agenda is approval of joint Town Council and School Board minutes for September 29th, 2014, last time we met. Is there a motion made by Vice Chair Barnes? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dwyer. Any corrections? Mr. Koenig.
Thank you. On page two, line 18, it says, "As an example of what HE Coalition has been doing," I believe that should have been THE Coalition. And the other one I found on page three, line 30, says, "Gather data that helped to uncover root causes in the community." And I think that was supposed to be uncover.
Thank you. Any other corrections? I had a couple. On page two, line four, the last word in the sentence substance, "To start a coalition for substance." I think it should include the words abuse prevention, substance abuse prevention. And then on page five, line eight, the paragraph above has Vice Chair Barnes asking questions of Ms. Wolfline. Line eight has Ms. Wolfline asking a question that she then responds to, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Barnes, that Ms. Wolfline in line eight should be you.
Yes, it should. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On page seven, line 17, "The estimated cost of the ramp that we were considering was $50,000." Yet line 17 references Mr. Rothaus not imagining it costing 5,000. Should that number be 50 or 5?
Well, as I'm reading it, I wasn't sure whether or not I was... I was, I knew it was going to be much higher, but I thought it should have been lower, I guess is the point. So I don't know.
So you're okay with five? Okay. That's good. Line 42 on the same page, Business Administrator Matt Chevanel, not Mark. Line 48, Mr. Chevanel, not Ms.
He got tech time, didn't he?
Page nine.
Let's, let's just let it go.
I am regretting I said anything. Page nine, line 44 says, "The middle school." It's the upper elementary school where we hold elections. Page 10, line 34, "The item was brought forward to the level of a joint meeting consideration, not the planning board." Page 11, line 10, "Building issues would look to be bonded, but not the roof and ventilation system." So if we can insert "but not," and that may be it. And that's all that I had. Thank you. So with that, all those in favor of accepting the September 29th, 2014 joint meeting minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. One abstention. So the motion passes. We have 11:10:01 with Counselor Valencourt abstaining. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. And that will take us to item number three, Presentation on Housing Developments in Merrimack. I would invite to the table Community Development Director, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board and the Council. Happy to be here tonight to give you a brief update on some of the significant mixed-use development projects and a couple of the larger residential development projects that have been occurring in town over the last couple of years. Starting with our mixed-use projects, for those that aren't aware, we have had two mixed-use development projects that have received conditional approval from the Planning Board. The first is for the Flatley project up on Daniel Webster Highway near St. Cobain. That project is located on the map that's up on the screen. It encompasses about 90 or so of the 150 acres that Flatley owns of land in that particular location. The second project is Edgburk Heights, which is located just to the south of Nashua Corp. and Nano Comp. On the east side of Daniel Webster Highway, near towards the Nashua Town Line. That parcel encompasses about 35 acres of land. And then lastly, and most recently, the Zoning Board of Adjustment just last month granted three variances to allow the Merrimack Premium Outlets, so-called pad site at the entrance to Merrimack Premium Outlets at the corner of Continental and Industrial Boulevard, to move forward with a conditional use permit to look for a mixed-use development project at that location. And that parcel encompasses approximately 20 acres of land. The first and only project to the, to this date that actually has a final approval on the conditional use permit is the Flatley project. They are proposing a number of different uses that I've tried to highlight on the series of maps. The first phase, which is currently in front of the Planning Board and Site Plan Review, is for 240 multifamily residential units to the southern portion of the property. Just to the north of that is a 180,000-square-foot retail pad and a 242-seat restaurant conceptually proposed for that portion of the site. This has not yet come forward with any specific users or site plan at this point. That would be a future phase following the development of the multifamily use. Moving further north, we have additional retail pads encompassing about 96,000 square feet of mix of office, retail, restaurant potential uses within those facilities. And then lastly, to the northerly part of the site is a 120,000-square-foot High Bay warehouse office building and another 20,000 square feet of retail. The High Bay office has actually been previously approved by the Planning Board prior to the development of this mixed-use project. It was originally going to be located in between St. Cobain and the river. However, they reconfigured that as part of this mixed-use project to locate it to the north of the St. Cobain facility, pending a larger development in the back portion of the lot. As I mentioned, they've only encompassed about 90 of the 150 acres. At the time that this originally was going through the Planning Board process, there was a large million-square-foot facility that was looking at the parcel in between the river and St. Cobain. That project has not moved forward and is not likely to move forward. However, that 60 or so acres still remains outside of the conditional use permit approved for the mixed use. It would only allow for industrial development at this stage. Just an update on what has happened with this. The Planning Board conditionally approved that project back in November last year, and it was signed, meeting all the conditions of approval, back in September 1st. They are currently scheduled for next Tuesday with the Planning Board for what might be their final public hearing and potential conditional approval for the first portion on the multifamily. The required phasing that is part of that project, they are currently allowed by the phasing that was approved to do four out of the five multifamily buildings, and they would not be permitted to move forward with a fifth building until a portion of the non-residential part of the mixed-use project were to move forward. So until they have either a commercial or an industrial use, or they will not be able to build that fifth building as part of that multifamily project. As part of that review, we did have a fiscal impact analysis that was prepared by a consultant that was hired by the Flatley Group. That was then analyzed and reviewed by a town-hired consultant, Arnett Development Group. The general findings that came out of that after the review is that at build-out, we'd probably see about an $800,000 a year net positive impact to the community. That meaning about $1.2 million a year in taxes and revenues, like auto registrations, things of that nature, and approximately $400,000 a year in municipal and school costs associated with that. Looking at the number of children that we would anticipate in the development of this style, because this is a multifamily project, the multiplier for school-aged children is significantly lower than it would be for a single-family home. That multiplier that is agreed upon by most of the economists in New Hampshire is about .17 children per unit. So we would expect approximately 40 kids to come out of this particular development of build-out. Looking next at the Edgburk Heights project, again, this is the one located south of the former Nashua Corp. and Nano Comp. This project is also several phases. To the northerly part, there is a 20,000-square-foot commercial pad and gas station convenience store facility. Moving to the south, the other phase would include two additional pads for 14,400 square feet of commercial office space. And at the time being, proposed 74-bed assisted living facility. The applicant is considering amending that portion of the mixed-use project. They may be coming forth to the Planning Board to look at potentially elderly housing replacement for the assisted living portion of the property. However, they have not yet moved forward with that at this, at this stage. Lastly, is 156 units of multifamily residential as part of this project. The phasing on this particular project is a little different than Flatley. This one actually received their conditional approval first, so the Planning Board took a different approach on phasing. In terms of this, before the, any occupancy permits can be issued for any of the multifamily units, some portion of the commercial development would have to be taking place to make sure that there is mixed use on the property from the outset. Again, this was approved by the Planning Board conditionally in August last year. They did just recently, in July, obtain an extension to that approval as they continue to look at potentially changing that assisted living portion of the project. So this project's conditions will now expire in August of 2016. And again, this also outlines that proposed change that might be coming forth for the elderly housing. Similarly, the same consultant worked on the fiscal impact for the applicant in this case, and we used, again, Arnett Development to review. The net positive fiscal for this project is about $430,000 a year, looking at 660 in terms of revenues and 230 in school age and municipal and school costs, and about 27 school-aged children out of the 156 units. Lastly, and the newest of these, and from my perspective, potentially the more, most exciting of the three, given the style in which it's really truly mixing uses, is the proposal by Mr. Monahan near the Merrimack Premium Outlets. The first component of this would be a five-story, 100,000-square-foot hotel with a restaurant pad out front. Because of the size of the property, they would be looking at doing structured parking, so there's a potential for a five-story parking garage on the property, along with retail and apartments above that retail. The one thing that I find interesting and more exciting about this style of mixed-use development is that they are actually looking to propose mixing the uses within the same building. This type of development would actually have the retail, restaurant with facilities on the first floor, and then the apartments above. So you're actually mixing uses within the same building on this particular project. And then lastly, additional office, apartment, retail space towards the industrial drive portion. It's our understanding that the, Mr. Monahan has decided to move with the mixed-use approach on this particular process, project for a couple of reasons. If you may recall, when Merrimack Premium Outlets was first approved several years ago, the concept for this property was for the hotel and three freestanding restaurants. Through his conversations with some local businesses, including some of the major employers in town, he's heard there's a need for housing for employees, for training, the people that come in from other parts of the country for longer periods of time, to be in proximity to those larger businesses that we have in town. So in response to that, he has decided to move forward with a mixed-use project here in this location, which the zoning board has given the initial go-ahead to. But we're still a long way from seeing where this goes. It has not yet been presented to the Planning Board. As I noted, they received the three variances last month. We have yet to see an application filed. And that mix of uses and square footages are very conceptual in nature at this point. They could change. And I expect that they'll be clarified and refined as we continue to work through the review process on this project. Again, we will, again, require a fiscal impact analysis. That's part of the criteria that is required in order to obtain a conditional use permit to allow for mixed uses in Merrimack. And we will, again, utilize a consultant from our perspective to review that. Based on the 120 units in this concept, we would anticipate about 20 school-aged children to be produced by this project. When we're looking at a couple of the other residential projects, the subdivisions that have taken place, Old Blood to Mason and conversion of former retail, excuse me, office facility at Crosswoods Path Boulevard into residential. We have not required fiscal impact analyses for typical standard subdivision in Merrimack. That's something that's a specific requirement of a mixed-use project. However, in looking at the information that's out there in terms of multipliers for school-aged children, looking at that analysis, we can anticipate anywhere from .9 to .99 for a multiplier for single-family residential homes. Again, depending entirely on the number of bedrooms. The fewer bedrooms, obviously, the fewer kids you're going to see. If you average that out, it's about .64 for a single-family home versus the .17 for a multifamily project. The Chestnut Hill Old Blood development, as you know, near the middle school, was approved conditionally this past year. That would provide 72 new cluster homes. The average estimate using that .7 would approximate 47 school-aged children. If we're looking at a high estimate, assuming they were all four-bedroom homes, we would look at about 72 children that come out of that development. Likewise, the Tamejian Cluster Development has 19 lots. The average estimate would be 13. The high estimate would be 19. And then lastly, the Crosswoods Path project, which is a conversion of retail into 21 units of multifamily, we expect would have about four children to be produced out of that. So those really highlight the, the significant residential developments that we've seen over the course of the past year or so. And certainly welcome any questions either Board members or the Council have at this point.
Thank you for a fantastic report. I'd like to thank the Town Manager and Council Chair for suggesting the topic. It's a very relevant and very informative report. Are there any questions from the Council or the Board? Vice Chair Barnes.
First, I had a question about the impact of the demographic profile that Merrimack will have when you consider the number of multi-unit developments. Obviously, you're taking the proportion of single homes to multifamily or dwellings, and you're, you're getting a big chunk of increase in multifamily dwellings. So what impact does that have to the demographic profile that will be perceived from someone outside looking in?
From, from the macro perspective of Merrimack in terms of the mature, our maturity as a community and the, the mix of development types that we have, where we have a robust commercial and industrial base and a mix of single-family residential homes and multifamily homes already. What we're seeing is development of these multifamily projects in areas where they're intended to be, which is those areas to the west of the, to the east of the Turnpike, where the water and sewer infrastructure is available, and the zoning has always anticipated allowing for these types of developments. If you look at a percentage of how much of our population will be made up of multifamily today versus when these projects build out, you're maybe seeing a tick-up of maybe 2% or 3% in terms of the overall percentages of multifamily versus single-family homes. We still have a significant portion of land to the west of the Turnpike that is not zoned for multifamily development, nor is it anticipated that we would look to do multifamily development in those areas. Though most of that area is either built out or is more challenging to develop. The land that's left for most single-family development in Merrimack and most mature communities is the areas that have significant challenges of wetlands and slopes and other things. So I would foresee that we continue, Merrimack and Hillsborough County in general have been very slow growth over the last five to seven years. We haven't even averaged 1% growth in this part of the state, at least over the last several years. We're actually, from an economic development standpoint, I, I want to see this mix of housing come into town because that helps us to attract and retain the types of businesses that the community wants to have. We need to have a diversity of housing choices in the community in order to attract that good economic development that I think everybody in the community desires to have.
And a number of years ago, the community, and I sat as a School Board rep for the tail end of it, did a Fields Needs Committee report, and we did a comprehensive report, hundreds of pages. Tim Tenhae, I almost said Tim Thompson, that's you. Tim Tenhae chaired it. And actually, Flatley was very highly identified as an area that would have the opportunity for fields based on its location, based on its, its layout, its, you know, flatness. Is there any opportunity for any of these development areas to have fields integrated into the projects? Or has that been approached or requested?
It's still something that certainly could happen at the site plan level. At this stage, when you get the conditional use permit for the mixing of uses, what you're really approving is the zoning, so forth, for the property. It anticipates you're going to have this type of development, approximately this square footage. But the actual specific locations and design and layout are only taken care of when you go through the formal site plan process, which any project would have to do. So there's always opportunities through the Planning Board review process to look for integration of recreational facilities as part of that. I know there have not been much discussion on that end in terms of the multifamily portion of the project, but there is still opportunity with the other parts of that CUP. The, the caution I would have with Flatley's location in particular is, given its location, its zoning, and the value that could be associated with non-residential development, there, there has to be a careful balance of how much of that land ends up not being utilized for tax-based purposes.
Fair enough. And the final question I have was looking at some of our surrounding towns, Hudson, Milford, Amherst, Bedford. Where does our mix of multi-use, industrial business, can you show like a comparable? Where, where will, will these projects put us in comparison to them? We have more multifamily than, than the others. Will we have more industrial, more commercial?
All the above, actually. If, if you're looking at the communities, say, Amherst, Milford, Hudson, taking out Nashua, even if you look across the river to Londonderry, Litchfield, and Bedford, we have a more diverse tax base than probably any of the other surrounding communities, with probably the exception of Londonderry. Londonderry has the unique advantage of having a gob of land south of the airport that's building up at a tremendous rate. And as of today, actually, the Pettingill Road project is actually open and providing access to that area south of the airport. I had a chance to drive through it on my way to Salem this afternoon and to see the development. That they've, they've had a couple of huge developments. Pratt &amp; Whitney did a 700,000-square-foot facility. FedEx has built a 680,000-square-foot facility. There's just tremendous greenfield area that Londonderry has been planning for, for the better part of the last decade plus. Happened to know because I was there before I came here. We are in a pretty good position. I was actually conversing with a local engineer who does different projects in town, working on some revisions to the Anheuser-Busch project that'll be coming forth currently. And he mentioned to me, he said, you know, between Merrimack and Londonderry, you're probably the two hottest communities in the state right now in terms of development and economic development. There's more happening here than other places in Southern New Hampshire. But again, going back to the original question, we, we have probably, with the exception of Londonderry, a better base of commercial and industrial development than most of the surrounding communities. And we also probably have a better mix of multifamily and single-family development than those communities. Bedford's probably the closest to us in terms of the towns other than Nashua and obviously Manchester, which have a much higher rental population than the surrounding communities out here.
And that was actually the very point of my question, was are we trending more toward becoming a Manchester or Nashua versus staying a, a bedroom community?
I don't think so because really, we're limited by our infrastructure. Where is water and sewer available in order to provide the type of infrastructure you need for multifamily development? And because, you know, 75% of the community is west of the Turnpike, that's areas where multifamily is just not going to happen.
That's a lot of great information. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, just to follow up on, on Member Barnes's line of questioning. 2008, the legislature enacted, enacted the workforce housing law. And I think you've kind of alluded to a little bit about the economic development piece about, about that. Is it possible to either confirm that developments such as like this improves our ability to provide workforce housing in our community, or is, you know, are, is it still going to continue to be a struggle for us as a community? What's your take?
Sure. I was actually just chatting with this, with Eileen before the meeting, so timely question. In terms of the state statutes and what really workforce housing means, it's important to understand that it's done on a regional basis. There are HUD fair market rent areas that the state has divided into, and each individual fair market rent area has a family median income that is the basis for determining what is an affordable home for sale and an affordable home rental apartment. For a home for sale, it has to be affordable for a family of four at 100% of the median family income. In this particular region of the state, the median family income is over $90,000. So you're talking about a home for sale somewhere in the neighborhood of $270,000 to $290,000 would be considered workforce housing under that state statute. Conversely, for the rental part, it's 60% of median income for a family of three. So you're probably talking about rents somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,100 to $1,300 a month would be considered workforce rental. So when you look at the, the stock and the development that we've seen here in Merrimack, most of what we've had is either falling close to that range or in that range, particularly the, the resale value of a lot of the older homes in the community. What we've found through our master plan process is that it has not been necessary for Merrimack to address the workforce housing statute directly head-on with any ordinance or regulation changes because we're probably in that niche where we actually have a good base of that which would be considered workforce housing in our existing stock. What I'm hearing in terms of the new development, they are being sold and marketed as market-rate apartments in the three mixed-use projects. And I would anticipate those rents would be somewhere either within that range or just slightly above. So from a standpoint of how we need to worry about workforce housing, I think, given the, the parameters of the statute, I think we're very close to where we need to be. And I don't think it's something that we as a town need to attack head-on, but it is something that I keep an eye on in terms of whenever the new statistics come out from HUD to make sure that we're still in that comfort zone. Because I do want to make sure that as a community, if we find ourselves in a situation where we're not meeting that workforce housing fair share, we're in a position to be ready for that and to move forward with appropriate changes if need be.
Just one more follow-up if I could. As it relates to the project, and it's not germane to this conversation, then that's fine. But do we, do we view that the new pad site at the MPO is being potentially a catalyst for further growth along, along Continental Boulevard? Because I know that there have been, we've had some vacancies.
Sure. I would certainly hope it could serve that purpose. I don't know that it's directly being built for that purpose. Anytime you can get a development of that style, it really is, from a planning professional standpoint, the type of development you really want to try to encourage. And again, going back to the master plan we just updated in 2014, one of the recommendations from that is to expand where mixed-use developments are able to be built within the community. from that is to expand where mixed-use developments are able to be built within the community. As I mentioned, the Monahan project needed to get three variances. Right now, under our ordinance, in order to do mixed-use, you need to be in the industrial two, industrial one district, have fifty acres of land, be located on the state-controlled portion of Daniel Webster Highway, and have at least three hundred and fif, three hundred, excuse me, five hundred feet of frontage on Daniel Webster Highway. Obviously, the Monahan piece doesn't meet any of that. It's twenty acres, it's not on DW Highway, doesn't have that kind of frontage. But the master plan recognizes that that's something that the town should consider, is where the infrastructure is appropriate, to make some changes to our zoning ordinance to allow for these types of developments to move forward. And I anticipate that, once we get through some of the other things that we're working on with the planning board, that might be something that we move forward with in the near future.
Tim, thanks for your comments. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
That's great. Are there any other questions? Mr. Dwyer.
Is there anything on Daniel Webster that meets that criteria?
Yes, Flatley.
Yeah, but once that's gone...
Once that's gone, that's really it. Even Edgebrook needed variance to do that, because they only have about thirty-five acres. Edgebrook is actually, several parcels altogether considered to be one project, so it actually needed variances for both the size and the frontage requirement, because it wasn't contiguous frontage on one particular parcel. So, in actuality, when that ordinance was written, there was really only one parcel in the entire community that it would have ever fit for.
Safe to say in a general comment, that once these projects are underway, we, for practical purposes, have probably reached our build-out phase. I remember years ago, the number was thirty, is a population number for Merrimack. I remember hearing thirty-three thousand. I don't know if it's still accurate, but it was about the number I remember hearing as a build-out number for population. Just as you've been here now for a few years, would you say that, once this, these projects are underway, that we're ninety percent there, eighty percent there? What would be just your educated guess?
That is, from, again, from my professional standpoint, that's always a moving target. Whenever you do a build-out analysis, you're basing it on whatever the zoning is at that moment in time. So, as the community continues to evolve and continues to look at different changes in zoning, that number is going to fluctuate either up or down, depending on what decisions are made by the governing body. My guess would be that, you know, if you look at, again, the majority of the land being in the residential district that doesn't allow for multifamily, without access to sewer primarily, there's going to be some slow growth in the single-family residential market to the west of the Turnpike over the next several years to decades. Again, who knows? But at some point, the town is going to reach that point where you find yourself looking at revitalization and adaptive reuse of property as things continue to age and things continue to change. I don't anticipate zoning to ever be a static document. It's something that should evolve and change as the desires of the community change. But if I were to look at today's zoning and look at these three projects, I'd say you're probably between eighty and ninety percent towards build-out in terms of a population number. But that, I think certainly, when I look at build-out, I try not to just limit it to population growth. I also want to look at the business growth, commercial, industrial development, and we still have room for growth there as well.
Thanks, Tim.
Any other questions? Ms. Valencourt.
Thanks, so formal. You can call me Jody.
Okay, Jody.
I just, I remember from the discussions, you're talking about the master plan, just wanted to point out one of the benefits that we talked about, the potential for the multifamily mixed-use housing was the possibility that we might get some young people to stay in town.
Absolutely.
Because what happens is, our young people, they graduate from our high school, they go off to college, they come back, and they end up having to live in some, young people don't want to live in Nashua or Manchester, but those are primarily the spots in southern New Hampshire where people of those, that age demographic, and they're just starting out, got college loans, that's the only place they can afford to live. So, there's potential for keeping young people in town, which I think is a real added bonus.
Absolutely.
And I'm excited to see the, especially the one at the pad over by the outlets, if we could, I think, not only would that possibly attract employees, but we might have some other people in town who would be very, very interested in housing like that, so.
Absolutely. It's the stay-work-play mentality that I think is something, as a state as a whole, we need to really continue to work on. As I mentioned, as an economic development, it's not just the employees, it's keeping younger people in town.
As our population continues to age, trying to keep young people, and they just can't afford a house or any kind of housing in Merrimack right now. It's really tough.
I spent three years delivering with my parents when I got out of college, so.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Kame.
Thanks, Tim. I just wanted to ask quickly, when you were talking about the Flatley property, you mentioned five buildings, but you only show four, and you talk about 240 units. Does that 240 units include all five buildings?
The 240 is all five buildings, correct.
Okay, so that would be the total build-out.
Correct.
And the fifth building would be in that gray pad that you don't have assigned?
The one building that would be, I'm trying to figure out which one it was here.
That gray spot doesn't look like it has anything targeted for.
It's actually the building that's here, was the one closest to the residential neighborhood to the south. That's the fifth property, the fifth building that would be after another non-residential portion is constructed. Yes.
Okay, thank you. One other question I wanted to ask was the, just your gut feel on what's ever going to happen with the old Merrimack Hotel.
It's a good question, and it's actually something that, I know that the new owners have been in, they've met with myself, with Eileen, and Paul, and Nancy, and Tom, at least on a couple of different occasions, with what they hope to do with the property. Based on feedback they received from us on that, I think they're still exploring alternatives. I don't think they've settled on anything yet. One of the things that the planning board has given me the okay to go ahead and start working on, and I've begun work on, but it's not yet completed, is looking at some sort of overlay district for not only the Merrimack Hotel, but the former Shaw's building and other underutilized sites within the community, to have the ability to do revitalization zoning that has some flexibility through a conditional use permit, to allow the planning board and developers some flexibility to come up with creative solutions for those types of underutilized sites. I'm hoping to have something in front of the planning board within the next couple of months on that. But that's really, I know that the folks from the Merrimack Hotel are aware that I'm doing that. They're very anxious to see what I come up with and hope to participate in the process in terms of the public hearings and everything else going through the adoption of that ordinance.
Mr. Rothaus.
Tim, had I missed an email on the Merrimack Hotel property? Or, nothing's come out?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I actually have one, Tim. The information is hugely valuable, and as we talk about workforce housing and young people needing affordable housing, to me, that's the definition. From a district perspective, what you've presented is of interest on two levels, right? One is, we are hiring a lot of young teachers into the district each year, and they would love to live in Merrimack, not unlike the profile that Ms. Valencourt, Jody, presented. And so, it's very interesting to us from that perspective. And then, of course, as you know, with relatively flat growth rate and an aging population, we see declining enrollments in the school, and so, the numbers that you're sharing here are encouraging that perhaps, you know, that trend will level. Do you have a sense, and I know some haven't filed yet, some have filed, do you have a sense of what the timeline for ramp-up looks like for seeing some of these numbers?
Sure. In terms of Flatley, they're obviously the closest to being ready. If they are successful in getting a conditional approval from the planning board next week, I could easily foresee them starting construction in the spring with potential occupancy in either late 2016, early 2017. They, from their perspective, getting the residential component is important for their marketing for the remaining portion of the property. And they made that case very well to the planning board, which is why their phasing requirements are significantly different than they were with the Edgebrook project. So, that's really the closest. Edgebrook has kind of been spinning wheels because of the uncertainty with the assisted living portion of the project. They are, because of the way their phasing is set up, they need to find a non-residential use as well in order to be able to get occupancy out there. So, I would not be shocked if, when they come back and ask for the amendment to change to elderly housing, they ask to revisit the phasing as well, given what happened with Flatley and what happens with the planning board, I'm certainly not going to predict here tonight. But I would anticipate there probably would be some softening in terms of the direction on phasing with that project, to make it at least consistent with what they've done with Flatley.
And what does that do with timeline?
That would probably push their timeline up. I know that, again, the key is getting the conditional use permit finalized. They really have not done anything with it since August of last year. And it's also the same developer that was doing the Melton elderly housing near Island Pond, and we all know how long that one's taken. So, I'm a little less certain, to put politely, how that one's going to move forward in terms of timing. Monahan is another wild card. He actually just broke ground in the last couple of weeks on a project he was working on in Londonderry, which is a workforce housing project. That took him from initial application and variances to groundbreaking approximately two years. I would expect you're probably looking at, once we get an application from Monahan, somewhere between four and six months on the conditional use permit portion of it. And then, it's going to be a determination of what phases are going to happen first and what, I would say, again, you're looking at probably two, three, maybe four years on that one.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's very helpful. Mr. Schneider.
Thanks. A question came up when you started talking about timeline. The Chestnut Hill property, the one that's on Lud Rose, the school board is very familiar with that because of the issue with the access road that we talked through time quite a while.
I have nightmares about that intersection.
We've heard indirectly that either that development is on hold or delayed or stopped. Do you have any status of where that's at?
Because of the complexity of the project and all the moving pieces, they were given twelve months to meet their conditions of approval, so they're still within that time period. It's always, because of the state permitting involved and the complexity of that state permitting, that can take upwards of six, nine, twelve months, depending on which permits you're talking about, particularly when you're talking about wetland permits, which they have several of as part of that project. Really, until the state permitting part of it is done, it's really hard to gauge how it's going to move forward. Plus, the, again, that has a phasing component as well. The planning board was very, very direct with the applicant, that they have to make sure that the sewer infrastructure is part of the first phase, that the connection of Wilson Hill Road to Madeline Bennett has to be constructed as part of that first phase. So, that's a lot of investment into infrastructure without building houses. So, there is some, a lot of moving pieces with that. The phasing has not yet totally been finalized. The applicant and his engineer were basically granted a condition that they have to work those details out with me and my staff. We've had no discussions on that since the project gained its conditional approval. So, again, on that project, given the history, again, that's another project that was going on for six, seven, eight, nine years from the initial conception to where it is today. I would not be surprised if they're coming forth for an extension on their approval, given where things have gone to this point.
Right, because of all the ones you looked at, that's the one that could have the potential biggest impact in the school district.
In terms of number, absolutely.
Right, right, so, okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mr. Thompson, thank you. Very detailed, informative report. I very much appreciate it. We all do. Thank you. And that takes us now to item number four. Update on Merrimack Community Safeguard Drug-Free Grant with an Emphasis on Sustainability of the Grant. I would invite to the table Merrimack Community Safeguard Committee Chair, Deborah Wolfline, Merrimack Community Safeguard Director, Ms. Betsy Hood, and our Chief of Police, Mr. Mark Doyle. Is there room for all of you there, I hope? Wonderful. And so, we are all gathered here in order to support this very important program. And so, in terms of your update, the reason we've entitled this emphasis on sustainability of the grant, what we'd like to understand beyond the update is the requirement for a sustainability plan, the impacts of having or not having the sustainability plan, and what a sustainability plan might look like, so that these two bodies can come together in order to support that.
Okay, terrific. So, my name is Betsy Hood, and I am the project director for the grant, and, thank you. Again, I'm Betsy Hood, and I'm the project director for the grant, and I'm joined here by Debbie Wolfline, who is actually our volunteer chair. So, she is not here representing the school district, but serving as a volunteer on her own time, because she believed so much in what Merrimack Safeguard has done, all the years that she's seen it in action. And the chief needs no introduction. So, thank you so much for having us here tonight. As you mentioned, the grant does require that we submit a written sustainability plan, which is technically due by the end of this month. We may have a little bit of wiggle room from our federal grantor if we need a little bit more time, but they are expecting something shortly. And there really are multiple ways to define sustainability. Some can be sustaining the activities that we've been undertaking, others can be sustaining staffing, or perhaps a combination of both. If you take a quick look at the handout that's in front of you, what I tried to do was really separate out the kinds of things that are being done by Merrimack Safeguard volunteers. These are the folks, and we've always had a member from the school board and the town council who comes and meets with us, and those are the things that we undertake on a regular basis. We conducted a series of focus groups this past year about being responsible. We've analyzed a lot of the data that comes out from the youth risk behavior survey and the middle school outcomes. We're really looking at systemic change throughout the community. And then, the activities in the right-hand side are the things that Detective Prentice does that are really specific to helping us meet our goals around helping youth feel safer at school, helping the youth be educated around issues around bullying, and laws, and substance use prevention, and doing a lot of intervention with students and parents. So, I really wanted to separate for you that it's a much larger picture than a school resource officer or not, and he just wears multiple hats. So, really, the challenge for us going forward is around, what of all this do we sustain?
Right, and I think what Betsy hit on was exactly that. Tom, Officer Prentice, wears a number of different hats. He's our real go-to guy, and I know that, since he's been at the middle school, the school has really had an opportunity to leverage his skills in a number of different factors in a number of different areas. So, I wanted to do is talk quickly about some of the things that he's been directly involved with, outside of what we would normally assimilate him as a school resource officer. For example, since he's been up there at the middle school, he's really cemented that partnership that the police department and the school districts has had, notwithstanding the relationship that the school district has had with Mike Murray at the high school. Having Tommy down there at the middle school has given us that extra extension into an area of the school district that wouldn't have otherwise been able to do. He proactively recognizes and intervenes a lot earlier with kids up there to resolve issues more quickly, engaging in earlier intervention. He's really become kind of the, what we refer to, the school district probably doesn't, but we refer to as the district SRO. Tommy actually does quite a bit of movement and traveling around the district. He'll end up at Thornton's Ferry to deal with behavioral issues, or at Reed's Ferry to deal with behavioral issues. So, he's really not only engaged the different staffs and faculty members at the different schools, but he's become their kind of first call when issues pop up. He's right now working with John Fabrizio at Spec Ed to put together a plan in response to specific individuals and kids that have exhibited severe behavioral issues, and what our role in the police department's going to be. He's created a seamless information sharing between the middle school and the high school when it comes to making sure that when kids move, they bring with them the issues that they have. They don't leave them at the elementary school, they don't leave them at the middle school. And as such, we need to be able to recognize those individuals and put them on our radar screen. When I say our radar screen collectively, not just the police departments with Mike being up to date on what's been happening at the middle school level, so he's aware at the high school level, but for the district as well, because there are certain things that we do on our side of the fence that the school district doesn't necessarily see all the time, and it's important to make sure that the faculty at the high school is aware of what we've been handling at the middle school from the police perspective. We've actually been working in that information sharing piece to make sure that it bolsters our MOU with the school district, something that's been a longstanding partnership piece that Superintendent Chaffrey and I have discussed at length over a number of years, and have just recently put together the newest version of that and had signed that into our new lexicon of our agreement. He's been making earlier connections with parents and guardians, he's become that conduit for access for services outside of the district. So, relative to DCYF connections, JPPO connections, et cetera, things that the school district might not otherwise tap into, except for being in a courtroom setting, Tommy has access to those services outside of the school district as well. And he assists with parental coaching when and if it avails itself, so that when the parent... So that when the parents are dealing with the issues at the middle school, we now have that one-to-one contact with a lot of these parents. And again, it's a matter of getting them into the systems and getting them the services so that they know that we're here to help them as well as the district is available to help them. And again, it's all about making sure that we leverage all of the, uh, the services that are available for juveniles and for youth that maybe the school district doesn't necessarily have access to right away. We've seen a lot of positive feedback from that kind of connection that Tommy serves and that role that he fills up there at the middle school. He's really engaged in rapport building. He was a coach of the, uh, middle school, uh, baseball team for a while and he's worked very closely with a lot of those kids at the seventh and eighth grade level. He develops positive police team relationships and develops synergy and comfort level with the students. And I think it reinforces that police-youth partnership outside of the school district that we would like to continue and maintain, not only through high school, but even after the kids graduate from high school as well. He's discovering that kids and that exhibit symptoms of behavioral issues are manifested much earlier. I mean, we, and that might not be something that has been happening all along, or it might have been happening all along, yet we're just haven't been aware of it. Having Tommy there at that seventh and eighth grade level has now given us the opportunity again to identify these kids that wouldn't otherwise have been on our radar. We wouldn't have been able to intervene as early as possible. I, I'd like to be able to, and I think Betsy may, uh, allude to the Youth Behavior Risk Survey and some of the success stories that we've had, that we'd like to attribute to Tommy's presence at the middle school. But I think it's really working, I really do, because we're seeing a rapid decline in the number of juvenile petitions that we actually generate to bring kids to court either for delinquency issues or for child in need of services, actions that we would otherwise have to be able to. And I'd like to think it's because of the intervention that Tommy engages in at the middle school to make sure that these kids are steered to a point where we don't have to get them into the court system to get them engaged in front of a district court judge, to make sure that they get the services they need. And it seems to be working. That SRO intervention at the middle school really assists in the transition of students and parents to counseling as well. Again, it's all about being there to be able to intervene earlier, especially when it comes to kids who express a desire to self-harm, which seems to be something that I don't wanna see be, is in vogue lately, but Tom has been dealing with a lot of that. Something that's a little bit disturbing because it's happening at that kind of seventh and eighth grade level now. We're seeing a lot more of that. Having Tommy available and right there to deal with those kinds of issues and be that outreach go-to person has been very beneficial for us. We were able to actually connect with our JPPOs at the district court to give them a heads up on who some of these individuals are, as well as through DCYF. And they have a direct line to Tommy at any point in time so that they can touch base to cases that they're dealing with up there at DCYF at Concord that may have a connection here in Merrimack. And obviously, Tommy's connection with Merrimack Safeguard, he's been instrumental in the whole program from the get-go, not just as the school resource officer, uh, resource officer. Tommy was the chairperson at one point and he's been, uh, as Tim Thompson likes to use that moving pieces part, Tommy is our moving pieces of Merrimack Safeguard. He's everywhere and, and anywhere that he needs to be and should be when it comes to being able to reach out and get him for any reason at all. Tommy is one of those guys that we really are looking forward to be able to leverage long-term in that role because he is just the success story when it comes to being able to provide that level of service at the middle school for the students, uh, the faculty and for the parents who need him.
And I do think the challenge for us is when we submitted the renewal grant application that we were so excited to get, um, for years five to ten, we did commit that there would be a financial shift that would happen slowly over time such that we could sustain the activities and some staffing as the grant ran out. So that's really sort of what we're up against today, um, looking for your guidance and support around. What do you really think is so valuable in what we're doing that it is worth, um, continuing and, and what other sources might we look for?
Wonderful. Are you open to some questions then? Are there questions from the council or the school board? Mr. Boyd.
Thank you. Deborah, Betsy, on page five of the... The notice of award issued date nine nineteen two thousand fourteen. Requirements for the grantees in the year three and seven. The Coalition must submit via email a sustainability plan to the government project officer within sixty days of the start of the years of three, uh, seven, three, of start of years three and seven of DFC funding. What exactly are they looking for in terms of a sustainability plan? Because as we've talked about from a council perspective, you know, when this grant expires in two thousand twenty, it's gonna be the decision of the council to decide whether or not we're gonna allocate X number of dollars to continue funding a police officer's position. From a management standpoint, it's up to the chief of police, whether it's Chief Doyle or who knows in the future. It's gonna be up to them to decide how they wanna deploy their offices. So I'm trying to understand how you have to communicate a sustainability plan to the grantee of the award when, in essence, it's kind of locking this particular council in a decision that really should be for whoever's sitting behind here in two thousand twenty.
So I'm gonna jump in just a little bit here and explain that Detective Prentice's role is part of Merrimack Safeguard. But really, what Merrimack Safeguard is all about, and Community Safeguard is the name of the grant, is about sustaining some initiatives in the whole community. One of the reasons we got the original grant for the first five years was that Merrimack, as a community, has been so committed to offsetting risky behavior among the youth. We had to prove that we had substantial support and already a number of initiatives going on. Things like Challenge Day at the high school would be a great example. So Detective Prentice's role is just part of it. What the federal government will expect us to do is to show all of those current activities on the left, how we'll maintain those. Yes, Detective Prentice is an important part. Our evaluator pointed out that he is truly an environmental, um, change agent at the middle school, as we just heard from Chief Doyle. Um, the difference that he has made has just been amazing. I would say, just watching him in action and watching his, um, awareness of which children he needs to check in every day and his work with parents and so forth. But I would say, his role is a small part of that. I'm going to turn to Betsy because Betsy, as well as, um, Tom Prentice, have received substantial training from the federal government about the grant. Um, part of the grant is to go and, and, um, carry on training to know about environmental change and also things like sustainability. So, Betsy, do you mind jumping in?
Sure. I think one of the things that is unique to Merrimack compared to the other drug-free community grantees throughout New Hampshire and some that I've talked with around the country is that such a large portion of the grant funds one particular individual. I think that was highly unusual early on and I think that what the, the federal partners are expecting is, is really a narrative of bullet, bulleted points of what we anticipate doing going forward, um, to really continue to engage the community in the activities that we are currently involved with. Um, just at the last coalition meeting that we had a week ago, um, spent, um, a couple hours reviewing the results of seven different focus groups we've been conducting over the last year around being responsible and, and came up with the notion that the best way to be responsible is to really lead by example and own your actions and know where to go for help when you need help. And the young people on our coalition said, you know, you get judged if you ask for help or you feel dumb if you do and, you know, people make fun of you. And so we talked about developing a whole campaign around knowing when to ask for help, being ready to offer help to people and how do you keep that going in, in the community? And, and really are looking to engage the entire community in being those supportive, judgment-free resources. So I think the sustainability will be financial to some point, but also a whole lot broader. I think one of the scary things that we're seeing is with the current heroin epidemic and opioid crisis, there are more and more young kids being impacted by their own parents' use. And, you know, how do we rally and really help provide support to them and try to plan ahead to offset as much of it as we can while we're looking at losing resources? So that's kind of the balance we're struggling with.
Um, I'm gonna ask if Betsy perhaps could speak about the last sustainability plan, just in general terms, because I think what Councilor Boyd would like to hear more about is what's this sustainability plan going to look like? Am I correct? You'd like to know what we'd submit?
If I could not to be contrarian, Ms. Wolfline, but to say that Officer Prentice has a small role, I think, is not doing him justice because in the handout, he has his own column. And I just listened to Chief of Police go on and explain the value that Detective Prentice not only provides to the Merrimack Middle School, but also to the lower elementary schools that we have in our community. So to me, when I'm looking at Merrimack Safeguard and when I think about Merrimack and its commitment to community policing, Officer Prentice is a key component of providing community policing as it relates to what goes on at, at our schools. So when I think of a sustainability plan, I think from a, as a counselor and speaking only for myself, he's a part of that sustainability plan. Because if you don't have Officer Prentice in there in two thousand twenty, then all that good work that he's done, building the rapport, building the relationship, cementing the, the value with the parents and the guardians of these, of, of the children that are in our community, goes by the wayside. And this heroin epidemic that you just alluded to, you know, now becomes what I would say, maybe potentially more magnified as a consequence because you don't have that, you don't have that, you don't have that presence in the school of somebody that, that can relate to the kids and say that they've seen it at face value. So to, and I'll allow Ms. Hood to talk, but I really wanna hear what the sustainability plan is because I think it's gonna impact my ability to decide as to how the sustainability plan fits into Officer Prentice's role at the middle school and, or at least how, not to put Chief Doyle on the spot, but how he would envision Officer Prentice's role being in the future. Should we continue to have him in our community?
You're absolutely right, Councilor Boyd. I, I apologize if I was a little misleading in what I said. I think what I'm trying to explain with the sustainability plan is that Detective Prentice is part of it, sure, but we also have very much to talk about with the community. Each year, we have to submit evidence that the community is, um, contributing what's called in-kind contribution, um, a certain amount of dollars, a certain amount of hours that volunteers give. And we're always able to show that the Merrimack community is really, um, a place that is very giving and focused on this. But you're absolutely right. Detective Prentice, we hope, will be part of this initiative and he is absolutely essential. So I'm not sure if Betsy would like to jump in or Chief Doyle?
Yeah, actually, and, you know, I'm glad you kind of brought that up because we're not sure who's gonna be where and who's gonna be making that decisions. For all intents and purposes, this may be a completely different board that we're looking at as well and we may not be the three that are sitting here discussing this in two thousand twenty. However, I gotta tell you this. Who, whoever is in this position, as long as they're subscribing to the community policing philosophy and recognizes the success stories with the school resource officer at the middle school right now, is gonna be in the same position I am right now and, and I'll make it clear that it's my goal to make sure that that person stays there, regardless of whether there's a sustainability plan in place or not. Cause we recognize that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And Tom, well, Tommy Prentice now, whoever that school resource officer is in two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-five, is that ounce of prevention. And the value, it's like anything else when it comes to, um, issues like this, that you can't really project quantifiably what kind of positive impact he's having, having, except for what we recognize and see from the success stories that he talks about and translates to us. And I, I can only tell you that through the specific anecdotes that I hear daily. However, I can tell you this. There's value in it and I will maintain that he is going to be there or somebody like him in his role will be there, notwithstanding this, this sustainability plan.
Thank you. I've got a few people lined up. Oh, are you all set?
I have one follow-up question.
Okay.
Chief, thank you for answering the question. Deb and Betsy, thank you. The, you alluded to about Officer Prentice working with Mr. Fabrizio regarding kids with severe behavioral issues. And I'm just curious, are, when dealing with children with, with, with those kinds of issues, are we talking about if they have an existing IEP or a five oh four plan, is it looking at whether those pla, those plans are working and then adding value to the educators that have developed those plans to kind of accentuate that? Or is it creating those plans? How do you?
I really couldn't speak to that.
Okay.
Cause I'm not that familiar with the, the nature of, the nature of the dynamics surrounding those particular individuals. I do know that it has engendered that discussion because several of the, the students in the district have some very severe behavioral issues and they're manifested in such a way that they act out violently. So what we're trying to do is get our arms around physically and literally, in some respects, physically, get our arms around that problem to make sure that not only is the faculty and the administration safe when they're dealing with these students that have these violent behavioral issues, but what is it that the school district's expecting from us? And having that conversation, what the school district can expect from us in those terms, in, on terms of our response. And then collectively, what can we do to make sure that we're all brought to speed with regard to, uh, the laws relative to being able to handle those kinds of situations, do so in a diplomatic effort, or I should say, in a very humane and compassionate effort, um, and do so within the constraints of the law, so that we're making sure that it's a safe and nurturing educational environment for the students that are there as well.
Sure. So I've got a few, uh, hands have gone up. I've got Vice Chair Barnes, uh, Chair Harrington and Ms. Valencourt.
Still Jody.
Still Jody. Uh, go to Vice Chair Barnes.
I was coaching you before you wrote down Valencourt, so you didn't say it. So, uh...
I'm gonna keep saying it.
You are. I tried though. Um, but I, a couple of points, I really wanted to kind of focus on some of the things Mark said tonight. And that is regarding, um, what Tom's role is in the prevention. I mean, we always talk about the school resource officer and that is truly in his title. But I think, you know, from the school, we do get the benefit and he is a, a part of our culture and community. But in the same token, we're kind of saving you some work by not having you having to come to us and do it, cause you're coming anyway. So, I mean, and that was really, um, if you could kind of expand on that. So if we didn't have Tom Prentice or Mike Murray in our schools, you'd be coming as often as you're here anyway into our schools for, to address specific issues, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, at the very least, we'd be going to handle the issues that they deal with th, when they're there. Now, if you, my experience with these kinds of situations is, is that they're there and not only are they dealing with the issues that perk up, whether they're behavioral issues with students or coaching issues with parents or counseling issues with faculty or otherwise. And the normal calls for service that they would otherwise handle during the course of the day, they're preventing by virtue of their presence, they're preventing a number of other issues from occurring. And that's that one, one unquantifiable piece that I just, you're very difficult to put your finger on, all right?
But if you were in our schools and had a little space for, for them there, you'd be coming in to have proactive activities in our schools for that prevention if we didn't have that role defined. Would that be fair?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent. And that was really kind of where I wanted to get with that. So, you know, it's in their title, so it's assumed that they're ours to use and, but it's really what we're doing was we're kind of helping you get your job done efficiently.
Absolutely. And the other thing too that, and I, I touched on it just a little bit too, is that, for those of you that have known Mike Murray in his position right now as the school resource officer at the high school, Tom, personality-wise, is very much like Tom, uh, Mike. Very engaging, he's very approachable. These are the kinds of qualities and characteristics we wanna see in our school resource officers because kids can approach them and can chat with them and talk to them. And it means that if they have issues at home, and you'd be surprised how many times we've actually been able to intervene early because a kid has come up to Tom or to Mike in one of the schools and said, "I'm having a real difficult time at home with A, B, or C." And we've been able to then bring it to the attention of the school district and say, "We're not sure if you're aware of, but however, and this is the kind of activity that we need to move forward on because of the information that was brought to our attention." If, for nothing else, because of the relationship that they both have with a large number of the students and the student body at the schools.
Excellent. Thank you for making that kind of more clear. Cause I, I think we worry about, what if that title didn't exist? What if, what if you took them out of the schools? You're gonna be here anyway. So it's just, it's, it's a lot of title and a lot of structure and a lot of collaboration and partnership by having those defined titles and, and places and positions. Um, so, you know, when you talk about continuity plans, to me, that, I think that we would have done that regardless of a grant with just our, our functional relationship with our, with the school district and the police department. We're just, uh, having the opportunity to enhance that with, with, uh, some of the, um, opportunities this grant provides us. Another thing that, um, I was hearing a lot was Tom. And again, we talk about the person and I always try to talk about the position. And, um, and the exposure that Tom had and the knowledge that Tom has received with things like training and, and going to DCE and going to seminars and, and events and getting a very specific, um, education and knowledge. And I guess my question is, um, is there any opportunity, or has there been opportunity to share that knowledge with alternative officers? Cause I always say, I like, you know, every actor should have a good understudy. So are there, do you have a type of understudy program in, in your department?
We call it cross-training, but yes. And we, we actually have our officers job shadow periodically. We have, I won't say in the pipeline, but we have officers who have expressed an interest and a desire. Don't use the pipeline word. I apologize.
Wrong word.
Thank you.
Didn't know that was on the agenda.
I didn't spit it out, so...
But we do. We have officers who have expressed an interest in moving into a role as a school resource officer because that's something that they've desired. And when we identify individuals who that would be a good fit in those roles, we wanna make sure that they're ready and able. If something should happen or one of our officers decides to move on, that they're ready... to move on, that they're ready and able to seamlessly transition to that new role. And that's one of the things that we have always done. Matter of fact, our newest officers always, as part of their field training, spend a week with each one of those officers in the schools.
Well, and if I could add just one statistic, I know, as the chief said, it's really hard to quantify prevention. But one of the, I'm convinced the reason that we got the renewal grant, is that back in 2009, when we did the youth risk behavior survey, you may recall that 17.1% of ninth and 10th graders reported that they had used alcohol in the 30 days prior to taking the survey, 17.1. Fast forward four years, that number was down to 10.2% of the ninth and 10th graders. And those were young people who experienced Officer Prentice in the school, and got all the education, the great role modeling, and that, you know, healthy choices.
Thank you. I'm done with my questions.
Wonderful. Chair Harrington?
I'm not going to speak for the council, but I think there's a certain amount of certainty that I probably do, because of our conversations about this during the town council meetings. There's absolutely no question about the value of not only Safeguard, but of Officer Prentice and his role. So I think you need to not fear, or not have concern of our appreciation for the position, now or in the future. With what's going on in this world, we need, our youth need all the help they can get, and prevention in terms of drugs and all that. But also, their attitude regarding the police is being formed at those times. And that's equally as important. So, speaking for myself, I think hopefully most of the council, that's not a question. You know, I could commit, yes, it needs to be done, way to the future. My question is the specificity of what you need from us, in terms of when you write the plan. And again, it's how we do it. It's not if we're going to do it, it's going to be done. It's just how it has to be done. And my question is, what do you need from us in terms of the report that you have to write? Can you get by with saying, "The town council, the town representatives have provided support into the future regarding all of this?" Or do you need specifics, saying that town council has provided, will provide support, or there is a consensus? What kind of specificity do you need from us? That's my, that's where I'm coming from. You don't, you don't need to any further talk about the need, at least from my point of view. I think that's clear. I think we're all committed to the continuation, whether it's Chief Doyle, or whoever is, and I think there's a consensus that we'll be here, regardless of who's on the boards and the councils. But I need to know what you need from us.
My understanding is from when the budget was submitted for the second five years of the grant, it indicated a very slow transition to having other sources pick up a piece of the coordinator position, which happens to be our school resource officer. So whether there's any wiggle room there, an ability to negotiate to not have any additional funds remains unclear, but I believe that they are expecting a figure of some sort to be included, coming from an outside source.
So does that have to occur within the next five years?
My understanding is yes, but we could certainly verify that with a project officer.
Which is okay. I just need to be able to understand the scope of what you're asking for.
At least three years, right? Because we're talking about, we're in year seven, and it expires in 10, so five.
You know, and I know there is, and, you know, I've read the information as well, which was, gave me an appreciation for Safeguard being an issue, and all the activities related to that, which may or may not involve, I mean, counselor, you never know, Officer Prentice, okay? And I know that that's, that, those are variables that will have to work down, too. But, so you, so my understanding that you need to have reasonable assurance, perhaps that's all you need, not a commitment, but a reasonable assurance that the town council is supporting and will support financially. And do you need figures? Do you need, and I know that Counselor Boyd brought up, you know, is this committing beyond the 2020? Personally, I think we are. But I also understand Counselor Boyd's issue.
What I would say, if we're coming up to budget season, Madam Chair, if the council needs to allocate X number of dollars and dedicate it to the SRO position, we should know about it, because as we prepare for our deliberations, it should be part of the conversation that the council has. And I think that gives the, gives the, the grant writers at least, the assurance that they can pull out a line item in our budget that says, here's X number of dollars being allocated.
And that's, that's the specifics we need to know.
So, so why don't I share what got us to this point? In terms of showing sustainability and recognizing the value to the community and the school district, the superintendent had suggested to the school board, a, an idea that the school allocate money toward the program, in the amount of roughly, you know, $10,000, $11,000, somewhere in that range, a small fraction of the cost of the grant, roughly 10%, that would begin to show sustainability with an assumption that at the end of year 10, there's some sort of cost-sharing arrangement. At our table, when that was discussed, the question became, well, isn't Detective Prentice, isn't the SRO, if I don't talk about the person, but talk about the role, isn't the SRO, after all, a police officer? It's community policing, happens to take place at the middle school, but he's a community police officer, and should the school district be funding a police officer at all? And, and that's really what brought us to this table. And what we recognized as well, was if there were funding, perhaps from the town in that amount, that obviously leaves additional monies for the prevention programs, the sessions that are put on with guest speakers, and some of the promotional activities. And the school board's committed to discuss putting money in, in-kind as well, to try to support those budgets, too. So it's really a matter of showing some progress in terms of ultimately paying for the position and the program as a whole, right? Not just the position, it's the program as a whole.
Right.
That we're talking about. And so, you know, we're committed to talking about those numbers during our budget cycle on the school board side, and it sounds as if the council is, as well.
So, so you're going to be receiving, and again, it's just for clarity for me, $125,000 from years six through 10, okay? So if there is contribution from the school, and obviously the town, how does that work? Does that, just play with numbers. Let's say we put in $40,000. Does that mean that $40,000 from the grant can be used for something else?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And does it have to reflect a gradual increase over the time of the grant to reflect the intention?
I believe that was the intention that was included in the original budget that was submitted for years five to 10. But again, we have the opportunity to submit a new budget every year. So I think what you outlined certainly shows a good faith effort
Okay.
to sustain the activities, and, and that would cover each half
Correct.
of the handout.
Correct. Okay. Okay, I'm all done with questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my list is now Jody, Ms. Valencourt, Mr. Schneider, and Mr. Rothaus. Ms. Valencourt.
Nancy, you actually asked my question.
Read your mind.
Yes, yes, you read my mind. No, I was, what do you need from us tonight? Because clearly the end of the month is coming, and we'd like you to have whatever it is you need. I just want to thank Debbie Wolfline for the numerous hours, years, all the effort she's put in to this initiative for the community as a whole. We wouldn't be here if it weren't for Debbie. And honestly, without this grant, I don't know that we'd be sitting here having a discussion about an SRO, because I remember when I was on the school board side, sitting here, talking to the town council, and we weren't getting a whole lot of leverage about adding a policeman to the department to fulfill this role. So I am eternally grateful that we've had this grant, because without it, I don't know that we would have had the opportunity to prove the value to the community that this position has, has added. And I have to agree with Bill, and I know all the initiatives that the Safeguard Committee does, but without an SRO, without Tom Prentice, without a juvenile officer, none of this would be possible. So I have no doubt that in year 10, when the grant is no longer here, and hopefully the town government will be funding a position for a police officer, because as I've said numerous times over the years, that a police officer should be funded by the town, it's, and I think Tom Mahon even alluded to the fact that there might be issues with some credentialing or whatever, if we didn't have him reporting directly to the chief of police. But I am confident that the school district will also be contributing funds to these initiatives, because that's basically what we've been doing for years, the school district has been doing for years anyway. So thank you very much for coming tonight, I appreciate it. And special thanks to you, Debbie, for all the work you've done over the years.
Thank you.
Mr. Schneider?
So, just following with Jody, I think, I think one of the things that the grant has done is it has not only funded the SRO at the middle school, but it's proven its value beyond a shadow of a doubt. I mean, we're now in year seven, and to the point where, where the chief, as well as everybody at this table, doesn't want to see it not occur anymore, means that the grant has, has done a large part of what it intended to do, to show the value. But I think, being the school board rep into Merrimack Safeguard, and being with the team for the last two years, one of the challenges, and one of the exciting challenges we have in front of us now in Safeguard is, where do we go from here? Because now we've, I'll use the word stabilize the SRO position and the value, and what the value brings. How do we go from there? What, what programs, what initiatives in the community do we do in the school district and in the community? You know, she talked about the, the different focus groups we did with businesses and faith, and, and, you know, healthcare and stuff. There's so much more that we can do. And I think the intent is, as we ramp down the funding for the SRO, there will, you're right, there will be money that's, all of a sudden, from the grant, that's not attached to the SRO. The idea is, I think, to start planning programs and initiatives that use that money to, to fund them, to get somebody to plan, to, you know, if we decide we want to do some initiative, to bring somebody in that knows how to market it, and promote it, and, and get engagement, you know, into the community. And maybe not, by the time we hit year 10, not say that we're going to fund $125,000 a year towards Merrimack Safeguard programs, but to show both the school and the town, that not only funding the SRO, but also funding the Safeguard program to some level, to continue those programs, and, and find where the other opportunities are, is I think the real goal here. So, I mean, if I were to flash forward to year 11, after the grant, you know, so the first year without it, I'd hope that, that, you know, the town body as a whole funds the SRO, and kicks money in from both town government bodies to continue the programs. But it's up to Safeguard to put programs in place that are worthwhile funding. So I think, you know, I would encourage, you know, both the town council and the school board to continue involvement with Safeguard, to work in the community, to get them more involved, and really carry this to the next level. So, that's sort of the way I view it.
Mr. Rothaus?
Thank you, Chris. Just real quick on Jody's point, she did mention how she didn't feel there was much support back when the original conversations started happening. And I don't know that I necessarily recall it that way. It wouldn't have been whole, jumping in headfirst, 100% of everything. But I believe, as I remembered it, there was, you know, there was, there was recognized goodness in that type of thing, and it may have been an officer who would have been in and out, and wouldn't have been living there in a full-time capacity. That's the difference, just from my, my recollection. I've been supportive of it, my wife was a big part of all of this from way back in the beginning. That being said, the commitment to the town, from the town, assuming that everything continues forward, is well over $100,000 a year. So, you know, I don't, you know, as far as, you know, contributing money in our budget coming up, I don't know, unless they're going to be taking away some of that grant money as the next three years progress, I don't, I don't know that I can get my arms around that. I think our commitment is, in fact, a large chunk of money come year 11, when the grant disappeared, and we take over the resource officer position in our budget entirely. That's a substantial commitment, and, and a good one. I, I believed that for a long time. So, so I don't know, I guess we might be having our future discussion.
Exactly. I suspect in the next council meeting, because I know time is an issue for you, that we will discuss as our own entity, the specifics and how we're going to do it. I think you can be assured that there, we are going to be supportive. It's how much, at what point, and that's what we have to fight about, so.
And I believe we have until early February.
Excuse me, discuss.
I believe we have until early February to submit the actual budget. So the sustainability plan and the budget are two separate documents. So we can use the language that you gave me today for the piece that's due at the end of this month.
Oh, that will be sufficient.
And then it would give us the month of January, I think, to have the.
Okay, but we're going to be working on our budget as well, so we need to come to some decisions quickly ourselves.
And that was going to be my follow-up, is, is the, are the minutes from this meeting sufficient to satisfy the report about sustainability, the fact that both bodies are committed to the program and will budget in this year for, for it?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Mr. Boyd, you had your hand up.
So just to clarify with a question, I'm looking at page two under the award data. The approved budget is $250,000, with a federal share of 125, and non-federal share of 125. Is it, would it be my understanding that the federal share was used to put money in to pay for the position?
You mean currently?
Yes.
Yes, some of it is. There is some travel that's required for training, there's some evaluation that happens, and there are, Ms. Hood's position has a little bit of funding towards it. The other thing I wanted to state, although I don't think it was evident in the pages you received, is that to apply for a year six through 10 grant, you had to demonstrate that you would be increasing your in-kind contributions each year, so that by year 10, this goes back to something that Counselor Rothaus said, by year 10, it needs to be demonstrated that the community each year has increased what it's doing along with this $125,000 that we get each year.
So when I look at the non-federal shares, and again, I'm not familiar with your school budget, I have not seen the school budget, so I'm in uncharted waters with what I'm about to ask you. So is it fair to say that the non-federal share was allocated in the school budget's deliberations to offset the other part of the grant award?
The non-federal share is what the federal government calls in-kind contribution. So it could be something like all of the volunteer hours that are, go towards Merrimack Safeguard initiatives. It could be a parent-teacher group in one of the elementary schools, has a speaker come and talk about parenting and communication. All of those pieces are what that non-federal contribution is.
Yeah, I was getting to the, I was thinking programming in my head for the non-federal. So that's significant if it's, if it's not in, if it's not through charitable contribution, it's, it's an in-kind contribution, like you said.
That's right, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So you have, for now, what you need from us.
Wonderful. Thank you all for coming tonight to.
Can I make one other comment, Chairman?
Yes, Chief Doyle.
I just got to say that, in notwithstanding the, I don't want to refer to the term minutia, but the details about what we're doing right now, and where this goes financially and fiscally, I got to just say that but for the work that Betsy and Deb have done, Safeguard never would have kicked off. And Jody's right, if it weren't for us already having our school resource officer there, we may not even be having this conversation, because we wouldn't recognize the value. But more importantly than that, to be able to sit around like we are right now, school district, school board, town of Merrimack, Merrimack Town Council, and collectively agree that this is a really good thing, and that we're all going to do what we can to work toward maintaining it and sustaining it, is just a terrific example of how partnerships get built and collaboration works. So I just wanted to say thank you both to Betsy and Deb for doing the hard work that you guys have done. And thank you both, council and school board, for all your support.
Wonderful.
So I have to jump in and recognize, it was really Superintendent Chaffrey who started the, try to remember, Drug Advisory Council, which is, was the, the birth of all of this. So I have to make sure she's acknowledged.
Well, and I'd also like to make a shout-out to the chief. In terms of many of the Merrimack Safeguard meetings, the chief himself comes, typically Lieutenant Denise Roy is in attendance at meetings, as well as Detective Prentice. And so we feel like we have just an incredible resource and support from the department at all levels. It has just been tremendously helpful to be able to have that kind of access and communication.
Wonderful. Perhaps we should rename Merrimack Safeguard
Perhaps we should rename Merrimack Safeguard the Mutual Admiration Society. But, but in all seriousness, I, I think what it points to is the fact that this is a community-based effort that takes a lot of people from a lot of different organizations to actually make it be successful. And, uh, so I thank all of you for the work that you've done on it, and, uh, for coming tonight to share information with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that will take us to item number five, update on O'Gara Drive tennis courts. I will perhaps start the conversation, and the update, I will perhaps look to town council chair and town manager Cabanel in terms of recent developments and decisions. So there is a longstanding easement agreement, decades-long, on O'Gara Drive that allowed the town to submit for federal funds to build a tennis court back in the seventies that actually required said recreation to be maintained in perpetuity. And that easement agreement is set to expire in two thousand and eighteen. The tennis courts are in disrepair, and the town council last year submitted for direction from the National Park Service through the state agency for direction on how to, what the options were on getting out of the maintenance of the tennis courts. And so, at a recent meeting, the council was provided with options, chose an option, and I'd look to Chair Harrington and.
Nancy.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Artega.
Yes, Nancy. Or I lean Ms. Cabanel to update us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is a pretty concise introduction. I just want to provide some information, additional information that the group had not, at least the school committee has not, uh, received. As you mentioned, on November nineteenth, we did review the options that were provided to us, and a motion was made and was approved to take option B, which includes the town to allow the current lease agreement to expire, at which time the provisions of section six F would also expire, and the town would no longer be federally required to provide perpetual public recreational property. The town would be required to fulfill its obligations until the end of the lease, the town could formally request the National Park Service to declare the facility obsolete. And the reason we've done all this is that, just for the public to know, the estimate for fixing of the tennis courts was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and the most, huh?
Two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve. And that was with a three-year warranty. And we did not feel as a council that it was worth that much money, with only a three-year warranty, that it would, oh, you got a copy, good. That it was not worth the money. So, that's, it initiated us to find guidance from the liaison to the federal government to be able to know what our obligation is. And they came back with three options, and this was the third one. So that the motion was made, and it did pass, that, uh, that the tennis courts be deemed obsolete with the appropriate federal jurisdiction, and furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign the letter necessary. So that is being initiated, the obsolescence, but the vote is, we are going to go with option B, we are going to let the lease expire. There were some questions, however, that were, you just received the email that I was going to read to you, but you have it. We needed a little bit of clarification as to the other recreational items that are on that land, including the skate park, basketball courts, and the ice rink. And the, from the same person, the liaison for the federal government for the parks and rec, or Department of Recreation, whatever it was, yeah, said, well, his response is, when the lease expires, the school district can do whatever it wants with the property as it is no longer protected. And basically, there was two suggestions for options. One was the school district can ask to move these amenities somewhere else in other land, or the town can sign an agreement with the school district to manage those amenities for them. So my thought is, and we can open up for discussion, is one, formal notification that we are taking option B, and that at some point in the future, there needs to be a decision from the school committee, what you, what option you would like, what you would like to be done, you know, is it something that you, yes, you want to keep it and those things and take care of themselves, or no, to get everything away, or let's make an agreement that the parks and rec will maintain. Those are options that do not need to be done now, not until after it expires. And in the meantime, that land would then be put back into passive recreation, which is basically grass, benches, whatever. So that is my understanding. I lean, is there anything you want to add or clarify?
Just to put a little bit of substance around that, so that people that are at home can understand what the options are.
Okay. Oh, that's fine. Absolutely.
So, um, we went through an enormous amount of effort to try and get anyone to answer or care from the federal government about what happens with this money that they, they gave us. And it was actually two allotments of money. The first allotment was for the tennis courts and skating rink, because it had to be a year-round amenity. And the second one was to basically rebuild the tennis courts and put in the lights. And it was the second grant that put in the perpetuity issue. So, and so basically, we have a federal grant, and we had two federal grants to do, to dealing with, with the tennis courts and with the ice skating rink. And we are now obligated in perpetuity to keep those, keep those recreational facilities there forever. So, um, we wanted to find out what our options were as far as that was concerned. So, um, after a year or so of back and forth, we finally got something in writing in English so that we could understand what it was that they were talking about. And it said, well, you know, there are two different issues. One issue relates specifically to the agreement between the town and the school district, which I'm not talking about right now. So just don't think I'm ignoring it. It is, it's still there. But what, what I'm talking about right now is our obligations to the federal government through this grant. So, option A is to break the lease, again, that's a separate issue. Should we break the lease, we are obligated to put that, put a recreational opportunity or facility of equal value on a piece of land that isn't currently recreational, isn't designated as recreational land or conservation land. So you would, for all intensive purposes, need to buy another piece of land probably, and then put in the value of what a today's tennis court would be, or, and, and actually pay that for some kind of amenity. So, uh, so, and then that obligation would go to that recreational opportunity forever. So, the second option, which was, seemed to be important to the council and the staff, was to somehow get out of this in-perpetuity part of the grant. And to do that, this is what we're talking about with option B. What we need to do, as far as the federal government is concerned again, in order to meet our obligations with them through the end of this lease agreement with the school district, which is two thousand and eighteen, is to declare, request to have the, the tennis courts declared obsolete, which that's what Nancy was just talking about, that the council said, yes, we want to declare the tennis courts obsolete, which then gives the opportunity to take down the tennis courts and put them, the town, to place that into some kind of passive recreational use. And we're looking, I think this, the town council is looking to the school board to talk to us about what that might be. And then, once the, once the grant expires, once the, the lease agreement between the school and the town expires, if we do not sign another lease agreement with the school on that land, we are no longer obligated to the federal government for anything. So that land can be for anything. If you wanted to put parking there, you could put parking there. If, if you wanted to put something else there, you could put it there. And, and then what happens is that the other facilities, which, which make it more complex on that same parcel, the basketball courts, the skateboard park, the town, which we just learned, could sign an inter-ministerial agreement with the school district, acknowledging that it's the school's land, but we are providing the resources, manpower and resources to maintain those facilities. And then, the obligation goes completely away with the, with the federal government. And, and so C is if the, the town decides that they are going to, that they are not going to declare them obsolete, they're not going to fulfill the, the obligation with the school district, then they're still going to have to provide that, that other opportunity somewhere else, or on that property. And then, the federal regulations apply to the whole parcel, including the skate park, including everything, even though they didn't contribute to it. So, is that, is that.
That is helpful. And, and actually, I'm hoping you can clarify one thing. So in choosing option B, you, you described the opportunity to turn it into passive recreational open space. It's, as I read it, it's not an opportunity, right? It's a requirement. And so, I'm curious, what is the timeframe for meeting the requirement? It's clearly during, before the end of the lease, they, but they don't specify.
I think that we could be comfortable with saying that the federal government probably won't be here to even look at this again before the end of the lease, but I think, you know, the, the council, I would, I can't speak for them, but I would imagine that they would want to make a commitment to make that happen.
Undertake it, yeah.
Within a reasonable amount of time.
Okay. All right, great. And, so in terms of the question at the table, the question, as I heard it, were really two, there were two questions. One was near-term, as it relates to that open space, what might we like to see? And then, longer-term, July two thousand and eighteen, the question on the table is, is there interest in keeping the basketball court, skate park, ice rink, or some combination thereof, there, through either our own management or through some agreement with the town in order to manage those? Okay. All right. So I will open this up now to questions. Ms. Gualyumi.
I just wanted a little more clarification on the declare obsolete, what that actually means, how that's defined, and how that, what, I'm still confused as to what actually happens that lets the federal government, lets the town out of its obligations to the federal government. I was hoping like my federal taxes could be declared obsolete.
That would be nice, no. It's, it's just a term that they use. It, it's, it's a federal term that they use, and they require you to request that the, the facility be declared obsolete. And what, what that means to them is that they've been here, and they see that is, is not operational, and they've, they already know that. So, should, when the town does request that the, the federal government declare it obsolete, they will grant the obsolescence, which is necessary to move forward with taking the tennis courts down, and, you know, turning it to passive recreational use.
We asked, right? Didn't Matt ask if, if that would be permitted? So that we're, we're, we're not going to be requesting that it be declared obsolete without having asked them ahead of time if that was something that they would consider allowing, right?
Yes, they're prepared to do so.
So we've had that conversation with them.
So you've had that question, they've come back, they've said, yes, we will declare this obsolete. Not formally, but informally.
But enough that we have the good faith.
All set. Vice Chair Barnes.
I just wanted to make you aware of something that happened at one of our meetings, and that is that we wanted to have an engineering study of the whole parcel. I think that when the courts were built, when the area was developed, back when we were asking to meet, we asked to have, you know, let's look at what the real potential is, let's look at what the, what the area is actually built on. You know, there's been speculation of ledge, but there's been no documentation of ledge. There's been no documentation of what ledge means to outdoor recreational facilities. And I think, you know, we even discussed Keach Nordstrom as being maybe a, a good choice, and I believe it was back in October that we had the vote. It was right around the time we were asking for the, the first time to have the joint meeting. I think what we need to do is look at what we have at our hands, see what makes sense based on what we know to be, and sound engineering practice at this point, and from there say, let's, let's look at this whole area, and does any of it make sense to be there, or does it all make sense to be there? And maybe we just jumped to some conclusions about the inappropriateness of tennis courts. My concern with, you know, having discussions with no, what I would call foundation research, is that we may throw out the baby with the bathwater, we do have some infrastructure there with things like lights. And why would we, without a sound analysis of what's appropriate there, you know, make adjustments to that area, which could include taking down the lights if we're taking down the courts and the fences, without knowing what we could do with it? So, you know, does, does anything make sense? Does it all make sense, what's there, but just we need to maintain it and have it whole and functional? But I think, you know, and then, of course, you know, who takes care of it is, is a second question. But we have time, but we don't have a lot of time to, to make those determinations. But I think at this point, having what I would call professional analysis of what that lot is, that all those facilities are built on, and what makes the best sense for the district in two thousand and eighteen, it, data will help us make a, a very well-rounded decision.
Yeah. So, one of the, one of the things that occurred to me when, when this question was posed about two thousand and eighteen, it seems to me that there's, and the reason I split it into two questions is, there's not much choice on the first, right? There, there's a requirement based on a decision made to do something. There may be some ability with the open space to perhaps terminate the electric, right, such that it's available for a future project, but it's, it, it has to be turned into open space. And whether somebody checks on me or not, if I'm, if I've agreed to do something, I think I should probably do it in a timely fashion. So, that's the first question. Then the question becomes the, what happens in July of two thousand and eighteen? And in terms of that, I don't, the school board doesn't have a current position, right? This is something we would need to take up, and it does need to be informed by facts. The benefit we have is we have a planning and building committee that could look at that parcel. We could give them a charge and ask them to tell us what the needs of the Mastrocola slash Merrimack High School complex would be, and what the best use for that facility might actually be. Board member Schneider had mentioned to me earlier. Board member Schneider had mentioned to me earlier, you know, we've got a plan for a central, centralized SAU special education office that we've targeted for one plot of land. We don't know the feasibility of putting it on this other plot, but we could add that to the charge, right? So, what are the highest and best uses that would satisfy the Mastrocola complex and the high school, and take that all into account such that we could get back to you with an answer about July 2018? But as I see it, we don't have much choice on what happens with the tennis court space, to be perfectly honest. Any other comments or questions?
So, we, so we need to hear from you. First of all, it's probably couldn't be done during the winter, I don't know. But what is your pleasure in terms of? Well, that's true. It's true, as long as it's not snowing, and it's not, the ground's not even frozen yet.
People are playing golf on Saturday.
So, you know, if, if there's some feedback you can provide related to how you, what kind of passive, just grass or, right? That would be more immediacy than the others, you're right.
Ms. Gualyumi.
So, for a passive, it means then what's there, everything has to go away, right? So, there's, no.
No, just the tennis courts.
Just the tennis courts.
Okay.
For now.
For now. But in 2018, then decisions have to be made as to?
And you have to just what the school board wants.
Right. So, in 2018, if you read the easement agreement, sections E and F, I think, are, are the, the, really, E is the pertinent one. Upon termination of the agreement, the premises shall be returned to a neat and sightly condition to the Merrimac School District. So, unless we specify otherwise, that we want to get into the business of running skate parks and ice rinks, which is not something we typically do, we would expect that the property would get returned in, in this condition. If, however, there was an agreement that could be struck in order to perhaps continue to house them there, but under town management, another agreement could be struck.
You need to let us know.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
I mean, but not, not, it can't be a lease. The only thing?
Two redheads.
It can't be a lease. Can't be a lease. It can only be an intermunicipal agreement for services of those facilities.
And I thought that's what we had, was a long-term governmental agreement.
Do, but it's a lease. So, the original agreement.
Oh, the original one from way back when. Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Ma'am?
Mr. Chevanel.
Mind if I just ask a question of the town manager, Kavanaugh? Just a point of clarification. The option B, obviously, I feel that's a prudent way to go. It says currently, right now, that you're, you're not under compliance in regards to the tennis courts. Once you declare that it's obsolete, there's nothing you have to do to get into compliance with the tennis courts?
Yes, there is. We actually have to, we, before the end of the lease, and as soon as possible, we have to convert that area to passive recreational use.
Okay. So, you wouldn't have to go and reclaim and rebuild and say, okay, now we have compliant tennis courts, but you would have to, before the end of the lease, return that particular area to a usable, open, passive use?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it would then become the school districts to do what it wanted, right?
Yes, it would still be under the lease agreement, and?
For the tennis, oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about at the end of the lease.
Oh, absolutely.
At the end of the lease. Vice Chair Mahan, I understand.
Yes, thank you. This is the impact of free money. This is how it was proposed to the budget committee in 1983 for the, for the lights. This is free money. In other words, the, the State Department of Resources and Economic Development had some federal money that hadn't been claimed, and if it didn't get claimed, it was going to get sent back. And so, this was the big push by the recreation director to try to put the lights in. We were also looking at the condition of the fee, of the, of the courts, and the company that came to assess them told us that there were deficiencies on, in the underlying strata underneath the courts at that time, which is why they were back again to fix the heaves and to, to repave it. And at that time, they only gave us a three-year warranty on it, because that apparently is a standard warranty that they give out in those, you know, it didn't matter whether it was built right or built wrong, they're only going to give you three years, just because of the conditions up here. So, those are, that, that, that's some of the, some of the historical, some of the other historical background that, that goes into this. And, you know, it just doesn't, from my perspective, has never made sense to continue to try and correct something that was improperly installed in the first place, back in 72 or 73, whenever they got the money. So, you know, I think that, you know, the, the fact that we can have them declared obsolete is, is obviously the best way we can go. Gives us a lot more flexibility in how we can, how both, both bodies can proceed in the future, but potentially to the advantage of the school district, because they get the piece of property back, and have a choice as to how they're going to deal with it and how they're going to manage it. So, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mr. Schneider.
So, we, we spent a little bit of time talking about the lighting here, and, and as part of it, and we know that there's lighting in the tennis courts. When the tennis court, if, if you follow the path or remove the tennis courts, and, and the fencing, and the lighting that's in there, is there other lighting that remains in the, the site besides what's in the middle of the tennis courts? Do we know? I'm, I'm just, I'm just?
There's some lighting, there's telephone poles in the back that actually face the, the skating rink. So, that lighting would stay. I'm not an electrician, I do not know how they put the lights in. We, we, we could look at that, if that's something that the school board wants, and as a town, we could look at keeping those lights that were, if you want to do some kind of lit area for passive recreation, for picnic tables and things of that sort, we could look at keeping the lights there as a whole.
Right.
And we could look at the lighting, all the lighting, where electricity runs.
Right. I mean, the key is, is that, I mean, taking the lighting down, if we decide as a, as a board to do something that would need lighting, it's prudent to keep it there. But the lighting's also been there a very long time, and, and what I don't want to do is have a, something that, you know, you, like you see the house thing on TV, they say, oh, you got to rewire the whole thing, it's got, you know, aluminum wiring, you need copper, and you know, whatever, you know? So, so I think that, that one of the things that could be part of when you make this conversion, is to analyze the, the state of the wiring and what's there, just so we know what we got. So, we could maybe contribute, you know, pitch into it, or understand what's going on to maybe give you some guidance. Right, exactly.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. So, what I'm taking away in terms of follow-ups here is that we, we need to stay in communication as it relates to the near-term objective of returning it to open space, as it was termed, or passive recreation. And the input, I suppose, from the town to the school board is the, the state of the electrical, right? And then, on the longer term, the school board needs to take up the entire property and our desires there. And as I mentioned, that may include having our planning and building committee look at that. And so, I imagine we'll continue to talk about the topic. I know it seems as if July of 2018 is a long way away, but in the, and time is a relative thing, but when it comes to governing bodies, it's a pretty short period of time. So, hopefully, we remain in frequent touch about this. Mr. Dwyer.
That being said, am I, am I hearing that you would suggest on leaving it in its current state for another two years?
No.
Oh, okay.
No. No. I think everyone around the table agrees.
Well, it's a fix.
It's an ISO, it's, it's in disrepair, it's unsafe, it looks ugly, and you're required by the agreement to turn it back to open space. The sooner, frankly, the better. I think the only open question is, is there usable electric there that may serve us in the future, and if so, what might we do with that in order to retain that option?
Because I, I say this because I've been told I don't speak for everybody, but I want to say, it would be our pleasure to do whatever you would like at that site, as far as removal of, of the court and the fencing and that type of thing. It would really be our pleasure to do so.
Excellent. So, everybody, we went from the mutual admiration society to the mutual benefit society. Excellent. So, we're good on this topic?
Yeah.
Wonderful. So, we will now move to item number six, public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council and the school board. All we ask is that you come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is anyone looking to address us under public comments? Wonderful.
We have one. We know this guy.
On the alone here. James Ferrer, Seven Marion Lane. So, one, I applaud both of you guys getting together tonight and, and working out the issues. I think, just from the resource officer standpoint, I, I agree with the council that we need to support that. As a parent, as a member of the community, I just feel it's safe to have an officer in the school, given the circumstance. And unfortunately, we, we live in a society that needs that now. With the same aspect of that, and all the good that the resource officer does, the skate park, the basketball court, and the ice rink give these kids an outlet. And I would really ask the school board, allow the town to manage those properties under Parks and Recreations, when that time comes in 2018, instead of just removing the facilities. They're working facilities, they're functional, they're structurally sound, the tennis courts are a whole different story. And I just think it's in the best interest of the kids that are going to be using those facilities in three years to leave them, because there isn't really anything else in the community that would support those kids' activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else looking to address under public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. And item number seven is potential future meeting dates and/or schedule.
We had, I haven't had time getting this one going.
And guess whose turn it is next?
I know. It'll be the new chair.
I only throw it out there because it was probably a good 15 months, I guess, when we met last. I believe tonight's meeting was a productive discussion around topics that needed to be discussed jointly. We know we've got some follow-ups, in particular, as it comes out of the tennis court conversation, and I believe as well, the Merrimac safeguard conversation at a minimum. So, I think it's probably a good idea to at least plan a follow-up. This one was pulled together rather hurriedly.
But well done.
We're back to that mutual admiration.
We might as well finish it up, right?
So, I, I'm open to suggestion from the board and council in terms of what we think might make sense for a future meeting schedule, at least a target timeframe. Mr. Schneider.
Well, I would say at a minimum, we should plan it, because we've been talking about budgetary things, especially with the SRO and, and how we have to ramp it. It probably would be good for us to have, if, if we're gonna, we should at least have a meeting sometime earlier than this in the fall next year, before we get into budget season, so we sort of know what we're up against. Because we're, we're sort of in budget season now. If we could break it back a couple of months at least, so we, we know it, that would be good. And, and probably summer isn't the best time either, so something like maybe Septemberish or something.
October's not.
Oh, whatever. Pick somewhere in there. That's.
That sounds okay.
Any other comment?
Our target.
Mr. Dwyer.
I would comment that our boards seem to get along so well that I, I think we can get in together at a moment's notice whenever the, whenever duty calls.
I don't know what you've had to drink.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Water and coffee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
From either side?
No? Okay, seeing none? I will, oh, Mr. Boyd.
It's not on the agenda, but I was wondering if the superintendent or the business administrator would entertain a question.
I can look to them to see if they are. Yes, they are.
Can you explain to me a little bit more about the Speak Up Survey?
The what survey?
Speak Up Survey.
It's the one that we had the announcement?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, basically, it's a, a survey to gauge people's resources they have at the home for technology, and their technology literacy and feelings about it. It's a research survey being done for that, for that purpose, because we want to expand our, our role as far as communicating that way, using technology, and want to make sure that people in the home have it. So, that's part of the gist of the survey.
Yeah, I was, I was happy to get the, I was happy to get the reverse 411 call, so it was exciting to hear that, so it was good to hear. Appreciate it.
And it wasn't at 5:30 in the morning?
No, actually, you, you called my cell phone twice in the house twice, so, so thank you, I appreciate it.
I miss you anymore.
We could put you back in.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will?
Motion to adjourn.
You beat me to it. Okay, made by Mr. Boyd, seconded by Vice Chair Barnes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The motion carries 11-0-0. Thank you, everyone. Good night.